All right, it is six thirty, we will call the meeting to order. And a roll call, please.
Humke.
President.
Thompson.
Here.
Engel.
Here.
McGraw, absent. Knadler.
Yes.
Trader, here. Wazorik.
Yeah.
All right. Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Meeting's been noticed, Ryan.
Yes, yes.
I'll take a motion on legal meetings.
So.
Moved by Mike. Second by Harry. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, against the same? All right, any modifications to the agenda, Ryan?
No, they're not.
I will take a motion on the agenda. Robin.
Thank you.
And second by Randall. And all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, against the same? Move on. Two point one, approval of the minutes of regular school board meeting on February seventeenth, I'll need a motion. Moved by Mike, second by Harry. And a roll call, please. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, against the same? All right, next, I'll need a motion to approve the February payable expenditures and payroll expenditures in the amount of seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Another motion, motion by Randall, second.
I second that.
By Jess, and a roll call on that one.
Humke.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
McGraw, absent. Knadler.
Yes.
Trader, yes. And Wazorik.
Yes.
All right, public acknowledgements and comments.
Yes, I'm on there.
Your other people?
Yeah, I'm on there.
Please, grab the sheet.
Yeah.
Make sure I'm official.
You're good. All right, go ahead. All right, thanks. Let me speak this, I've been here. I just want to thank more too for, you know, you guys are doing a good job getting the minutes out there and also the, having the the different videos has been really helpful. I've had a chance to go back and look back, I've missed a couple of meetings, but, but it's been good. I thought last time at the committee meetings, the financial stuff, the review of the Johnson plot, or the, yeah, it was a Johnson line.
The audits from Johnson.
Audit, yeah, that was very, very good, very beneficial, thought there were some good comments made there. Did spend some time, actually a fair amount of time, going through some of the information of the Baird Report. And I've just got a couple of comments and observations that I wanted to pass along to the board. First of all, that, and I don't know how best to reference this for you, because I don't know if you have copies in your hand of Baird Report or whatever, but I'll try to be specific, and if you've got some questions, holler, but, you know, the, what they went through as far as the revenue caps and revenue limits and how it's all calculated was helpful. Most of that I knew, and I think you probably have a pretty good handle on that. Where I was having some difficulties, and these are questions, if I had been part of the board or there at the meeting, I probably would have asked had I, had I been there. There was the one slide that talked to about the per people adjustments in the course of the twelve years. And it was that graph that got to a shortfall of twenty, almost twenty-four hundred dollars. One of the things that was omitted was the COVID funds, or the ESAR funds, right? And the ESAR funds actually account for probably sixty percent of those missing dollars during that period. There were, there was almost one point six million in there during that period, and those are not shown here. They were, they were in part, from my understanding, supposed to be somewhat to compensate for the inflation, you know, the inflation piece. If that's not right, you know, I'm mistaken, but that's my understanding of it. You're shaking your head.
I don't think it was to count for inflation, it was, it was to try to get kids caught up from the loss that they endured basically through COVID. So it was funds to put toward interventionists for ELA and math and things, it's not anything to do with inflation. And during those two years when we got those funds, the state legislature gave zero. So, so you could say that if the legislature gave some and they didn't give any, we would be in the same position as we are.
And those funds were also restricted in how we could spend them, so they weren't just spendable dollars for us.
Yeah.
So those had to go to very specific resources, and it is resources that we put much of those dollars to. So it was curriculum, it was, you know, Chromebooks, it was technology, because those were some of the approved expenditures that we could use those funds for. But those weren't just spendable dollars for us.
Okay.
We had to be sure that they were one-time expenses, because we, some districts went, put salaries on the ESAR money, and now they're trying to figure out how they're gonna make up that. We didn't put any salary money on that.
Okay, that was, that was my comment, I guess, or question too, because it wasn't clear, because Kevin from the Baird Group had mentioned that, and he said that, you know, what of the positions or costs that were used with ESAR dollars, were they all removed?
Yeah, we didn't use ESAR dollars on positions.
We did not.
Or on other expenses that.
Well, they were, well, they were one-time, like not purchasing curriculum, right, those kinds of things that you purchase one time.
Is that a one-time? Oh, is that a one?
It's for five years.
It's for five years.
So you, we bought the ELA and the math curriculum.
That's a normal part of your operating budget, right? I mean, technically.
You have to buy, well, at some point you have to buy curriculum, and that was one of the improved things, because we needed to put resources toward the kid, I mean, that's where the kids were struggling. So we had to look at it and say, where do we want to put the money to best increase the kids?
Yeah, so we tried to make a real effort to make sure that they did not go into recurring expenses, annually recurring expenses, because we knew we didn't have the funds to back that up after those ESAR funds dried out.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yep, that's helpful. The, the next question I had, or just comment, I guess, I went through some of the, you know, historical information and also the future operational expenses, and, and this is just a clarification, one of the questions I would have asked is, why are benefits going up six to eight plus percent each year over the next X number of years? What's the, what's the basis for that?
So in last year, they went up sixteen to seventeen percent, and so just anticipating that there's going to be some level of increase every year, because that's the trend that we're currently seeing. So in previous years, previous budgets, it would have been an eight percent prior to COVID. Now that increase, we're looking at, we're trying to budget that, it could be anywhere up to that, they're telling us budget eight to twelve percent, knowing, we know the district can't eat all of that cost, but there's gotta be a level of land expense occurring in the benefit package.
Specifically health insurance.
Specifically health insurance. So that's why you would see an increase there, is because each year we're anticipating, because I can't predict that we're going to get into a better pocket of pool. It'd be nice to join a consortium, but until we get a better medical loss ratio, we're not going to be able to join, join a group like that, and so right now, I'm projecting, kind of worst-case scenario is that we're gonna sit in this position we're at, we're not going to have a lot of leverage to negotiate with other groups. It's an area that we're continuing to research in the lens of, is self-funding an option? Are there other areas that we might be able to pursue? But I need to at least budget kind of worst-case scenario, it's gonna continue to go at a rate higher, slightly higher than what we used to anticipate, which was eight percent. This past year, it was sixteen, seventeen percent.
Okay, okay, thank you. The other, I, I think to go along with that, I think one of the things I looked at was just the impact of the, you know, based on where we were and where we're going with salaries, benefits over the course of the next five years, I looked at that in comparison to the total budget, and, and, you know, you maintain roughly that sixty-five-ish percent salaries, benefits compared to total budget. But what I was a little concerned with, I looked at the overall expenditures that you have projected here, and you, you really don't have a lot in the way of, it, it equates to maybe a point-two percent inflationary increase each of the next five years. And I was just curious, you know, what kind of plans are in place to make that happen, because that seems super aggressive. You know, because the, the salaries and benefits basically consume any of the increase that you've got projected as far as total expenditures. So it's just something, I guess, to look at and to, to see if that, that all makes sense. The last thing I just wanted to comment on was related to the actual, the referendum page, I know there were some comments made by the board about the amounts, and, you know, that, that whole page was kind of an interesting page. I mean, I, I kind of, I understood it. What would have been helpful, I think, in that page, you know, the fact that, I mean, Dodgeville did have, I know it says eleven point nine six, and it was four years at that amount. I mean, looking at the two point four nine that's being proposed for the April first, to me, again, a comparative would have been, that's ten million, okay, over that period, but actually, in reality, it's gonna be an ongoing of two point four nine, right? That's the anticipation. So I, again, that chart useful, but not useful unless you had the other information on the non-recurring frequency and time, you know, like the River Valley non-recurring of fourteen point one that they're going for. I don't know, is that five years, is it two years, or what is?
Three, I think, three, it's three years.
Is that?
It's four points, it's changes.
Are these all operational too? I wasn't clear. I, I thought I heard him say it was operational.
Yeah.
So still what they are? Doesn't it list them as operational or?
I think they're all operational.
They all operational.
It wasn't listed, but I assumed, and I thought I heard that they were.
River Valley is operational, and it is a three-year, and it's four, six, five, and then four, yeah.
It drops down.
But it's total fourteen one.
Yes.
Okay.
And knowing what, like on our lens, from where we were projecting, our Baird model showed after the four years in November, we were going to have to come back at that point for an additional amount, and what we were anticipating was it was going to be no less than where we were currently at. So that's where we had to recalibrate on, what are we, what are we doing with our expenses, and we need to make some adjustments now? We can't predict, you know, is the state gonna go and do anything different? And what this would tell you is, when they're doing these three or four years, there's not a magical fix. It will be in three to four years, they'll be going back to the community to ask again, is what is currently being projected for districts?
Well, yeah, and I saw that in the numbers, which is, you know, I don't know if people understand that either, that that's, that's the reality of what's, what's being projected out there. You're asking, or we are asking as a, as a community to fund the two four five, or two four nine for the next period of time, infinitum, but in reality, we're gonna be asking for more, you know, so anyway. That's all we have. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Mary. No other public comments, people's the only ones signed up there. Next, we'll go into acknowledgements, Ryan?
Yeah, I know, we have some different people we'd like to acknowledge from the admin team level, so I don't know, Heather, you wanna go first?
I'm gonna recognize two individuals this evening. The first individual I'd like to recognize, and I don't think either on, but maybe they'll join in a little bit. The first individual is Liz Heimerle. Liz has stepped in mid-year to help us out at DES. She's definitely been a trooper, as she's continued to carry on her regular responsibilities while supporting us. She's definitely added a fond spark to the office, I love her personality. She's done a great job of building relationships with our students, and I think Dodger probably is her favorite, and he, and he is probably also her favorite. Every morning, they have a lovely reuniting, it's so cute. She's been a wealth of knowledge available at our fingertips whenever we need some assistance, and she's always willing to also help support our students if and when we're shorthanded with our paras. So I'd like to thank her for her willingness to support us at DES, and I know her time will be coming to an end shortly in supporting us, but she's always welcome to come back and help us. So, thank you, Liz, for all that you do.
If I can add to that, Liz has been somebody we've used across the district, when we have somebody out, she's been somebody who's cross-trained and willing to help in any area. And so it is when Heather brings her name up, everyone was on the lens of like, oh yeah, absolutely, Liz is somebody who has a skill set, she rides a bus for us currently to provide support, she's been in the library, she'll step into any position and do her very best. So a great candidate to put up here as somebody we want to recognize.
The second individual is Tracy Breaker. So Tracy started at DES back in August, and she's been a wonderful addition to our team. She's such a wonderful balance of professional and warm, is the way I would describe her. She greets our families and students and staff in a welcoming and friendly manner. She's taken on a lot of responsibilities in an incredibly short amount of time. She's very well organized and also a great multitasker. Her calm, confident demeanor is reassuring to all who encounter her. She's also taken great initiative, there's been lots of little opportunities that have popped up in the last several months, and she takes the time to research it, ask questions when necessary, and do a lot of learning on her own. I'm incredibly grateful for her each and every day, and everything she does for our students, staff, and families. So thank you, Tracy, for joining our team and everything you do.
Likewise. We've got to have Tracy up at the high school, and we know she was a huge addition for us as well there, just in, all she focuses on her job every day, so, two great candidates. Admin team, was there anyone else that, not tonight? All right, so that would be it?
Yeah. So across the school district, Facebook page forty-six minutes ago, excuse me, they announced about the Dodgeville High School Key Club was named Distinguished Club of the Year at the twenty-twenty-five Wisconsin Upper Michigan District Convention in Sheboygan this past weekend. They also noted that Bryce Gerlber, our student rep, received Distinguished District Committee Chair and Gold Recognition for Service. So congratulations, Bryce. And then a big, huge shout-out comes to, goes out to Steph Martin and Jeff Bradley, and a special shout-out to former advisor Laurel Kozinski for their incredible work and dedication shaping the club into what it is today. So, that club is going out and doing great things. Needless to say, we have other clubs that are going out and doing great things, and I think you're gonna tell us more about it
Yeah.
in your report. I had the opportunity last week to attend an advocacy session at the Capitol with our representatives. It went as expected, they couldn't promise us any money, but they said they support education, I guess that's about as much support as they could give us. But it was well-spent hours talking to other districts about what's going on around the state. Quite a few of them are in our state, wondering how, hoping that they're gonna pass referendums also, so. It was interesting listening to conversations from north to south and east to west. All in all, it was a good day being at the Capitol from seven until four o'clock or so. Anyone else have anything to recognize or?
Oh, I've attended the high school play this past, and it was phenomenal, those kids put a lot of work into that, and just, it was like listening to another language, listening to the Shakespeare, but it's, it's just amazing how they can memorize all of that, and the way they acted with such passion was just like, it was pretty awesome to watch, they did a great job, and thanks, Mike, and me certainly, to help them set again.
They knocked it out of the park, and I worked it up at APT, I ran into David Daniels yesterday, and I thanked him, because he came down and talked to the students a couple of weeks ago, and him and his son came down, actually watched the show.
Oh, did they?
He said, they knocked that thing out of the park, and I was, I was amazed at how well they did. I was kind of coming in there thinking, you know, you go to that first violin concert, and kids' command of English sometimes isn't the greatest. I was blown away, they did so well, it was a phenomenal show, and I know that the attendance wasn't very high, but you gotta give credit where it's due, the directors and those students knocked it out of the park, so. I can't say enough about what they did, and then Saturday night, they just literally tore the whole set apart in like two hours, it's all gone. All the pieces and parts of the floor inside the shack, so, yeah, that's a great compliment, Jess, and the kids did a nice job. All right, so that's acknowledgements. We will move on to information and study. First is our student school board representative report, Bryce.
Sounds good. We got spring break coming up after this week, so a lot of people are excited for that. I know a few people already have plans for that ACT testing with today. I didn't go in, because I'm a senior, but my brothers went in, they said it went smooth and well, which is always good. The Wisconsin Athletic Service Award was recognized for Kelly Prophet, and then Duchesne.
Docno.
Docno.
Thank you.
You know, you should.
They all said that. So they're recognized for their contributions to DHS athletics, which I'm glad, I, I see, especially Kelly, she is around doing everything, every small task everywhere, so I'm glad she's getting recognition for that. At State Wrestling, we had four wrestlers go and compete and podium at the tournament. Notably, Hawk and Peterson won his third WRA state title as a junior, which is insane for him, and then Shane Rochon earned his hundredth wrestling win there, which makes him the youngest Dodger in history to reach that, which is two insane wrestlers that both be wrestling at the same time. Gymnastics also made the state after they won sectional for the second year in a row, which is huge, especially with how many seniors have been rotating through, and then they also placed third at state, which is a school record for the highest finish, so. Two winter sports doing an insane job, but girls' basketball also did an amazing job. They had three all-conference honorees, which is impressive, along with the boys' basketball, that had five all-conference honorees. The, the girls' wrestling had five, or an all, I don't know if I'm reading this right, but said that had five all-conference awards.
Is that correct?
That is, that is insane, we did a really good job this winter, along with seven wrestlers, seven boy wrestlers getting all-conference. Like we said, decon was this past weekend, I got back from it late last night, our club received the annual, the International Annual Achievement Award this July in Florida at the national convention, our club will once be, be recognized at the international stage. So that'll be in front of thirty-three districts and fifty-six countries or districts. Individual awards, Seth Martin got the Kiwanis Advisor Award for the district. I got distinguished board member for being committee chair, and then the bronze service hour went to Gianna Robson, Addie Hoyer, and Anish. Tri-state honors band, we had four DHS members perform at UW-Plattville, the forensics team advanced to sub-districts. I mean, along with two students receiving a perfect score, which is insane. I, my sister tells me a lot about forensics, and receiving a perfect score is insane, and then having two students do it is, is just even more. HOSA raised eight hundred and fifty dollars for the Children's Heart Foundation. I know we have this almost every year now, but still being able to consistently raise such a huge amount of money for good causes, definitely something I like to see, I enjoy seeing it. And then, the We Are Many, we had representatives attend the Youth Unity Summit. They said they learned a lot of, a lot of good things, a lot of things they hope to bring back to Dodgeville, and then upcoming events. I guess we had the play, that's an upcoming event, but you guys talked about how good it was. We have a hundred safety course coming up in our competition, DHS solo ensemble, and FCCLA, HOSA, and FBLA state leadership conferences. So a lot of good things happening, a lot of good things are supposed to happen as well.
How many attend the conference that you're going to, is that, you said down in Florida?
Uh.
What Key Club is going to?
Yeah, depends on the year, I believe last year there was nine hundred students there.
Oh, okay.
Um, plus all the faculty and advisor, I believe it surpassed a thousand.
Probably over a thousand people, okay. So do you raise funds for that, or how does, how do you go about getting down there?
Um, depends, so, depends on how it went. Last year, I reached out to Kiwanis and KUAS running for international position, they paid for my whole trip. But I know most people will do fundraisers and pay for a part of it out of their pocket, reach out to like grandparents and reach out to like Kiwanis and clubs and things like that, is how we raise funds.
Good luck to everybody going down there.
Yeah, I'm still deciding if I'm going down or not. Obviously, this year, I'm not going to run for position, but it's still a good thing to kind of learn about some of the bigger project and partners that we have.
Mm-hmm. I was gonna say, when you talked about Peterson winning at state, if he wins a fourth championship next year, the entire Cole Center gets up and applauds, pretty cool, and you have seventeen thousand people applauding one kid on a podium. They're fired up, they go crazy, that's phenomenal. They did it for quite a few kids this year, and I hope he gets that opportunity next year.
Yeah. Before this year, there was only thirty-three in the history of the state, so that's a humongous field.
Yeah, and they did it a couple times last Saturday, that was really neat, so, yeah, well, well, thanks for the reporting. Once again, proof our kids are doing all kinds of great stuff.
Yeah, it's a good report.
Yeah, thank you. All right, some quick committee meeting reports. Who wants to start?
I'll start.
Yes.
Policy, we talked about two policies, and two of them are gonna be on, we're voting later in the meeting today, but one was the school meal account collections rule. Actually, there were no changes from the last draft, really, it states that all kids will receive a meal even if they have a negative lunch balance, and we now have in the policy about how we'll contact the families once it gets to a negative fifty balance. So that'll be up for voting later, and the other one we talked about was the promotion and retention of students through eighth grade, that whole policy has actually been reworked, and it, we need to add some language around the Act Twenty, the new reading mandates into the policy, because that wasn't in there. And so that was added, and it was sent to the legal team to review this for the legality of it all, and to make sure it's really user-friendly, but the kind of gist of it is that there'll be a team-based approach to analyze the whole child, not just like the ELA and math where they're at, and see if they're ready for the next grade, but it'll also include the social emotional learning, and then integrate the parents into that process. So we'll have another chance to review that in April, we won't be voting on that tonight, but hopefully in April, we'll have it at a point where we can put it into practice so that they can utilize it. And the last thing we didn't talk about, because it had already been discussed the previous month, but it is on here for voting later today, is the truancy intervention flow chart, that was just updated at the county level last year. We just need to add, add it to our policy as a rule, and the policy itself will stay the same, so. That's it for policy.
All right.
Sure. Curriculum, we had a number of things, one was just updates from the administrative team, and much of those statements were about the upcoming testing or prep for testing for the forward exam for ACT, and the ACT, as Bryce mentioned, took place today. Toby also mentioned that it had been part of a training for behavior intervention, is that also at the elementary, Heather, was it just?
A training that Toby and I participated with Joey.
Yeah.
And with Seabrook.
Right, so. And so those initiatives were going on. And Amy talked about the status of the charter school grant, it's been submitted, the board, as of two Wednesdays ago, was it six members, is that still right, Amy?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, and there were, no, around thirty-five students that applied to be part of the program next year, a few of those were in middle school, and any update on that?
Well, currently sitting at thirty-seven students is where we're at as of today.
Okay, good. And it was, we talked about some curriculum updates for the art program at the high school. And some of the things that Bryce mentioned were part of it. And some of the things that Bryce mentioned were part of the discussion on activities directors report. And I think that was, oh, no, the big thing was the, the presentation by Greg Allman on the success of the math testing based on the, the, uh, math program we're using at the elementary, where, which is in its third year. Ready, what's the full name?
I read it.
I read it. Um, and he showed some of the, uh, test results, which were very promising and encouraging. And I think the general conclusion that the program is working really well as long as it's carried out to fidelity. And that's our plan ongoing with the program. So, um, next month we will hear from the ELA on the progress of the, uh, ELA program we adopted at the same time.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? All right, um, we'll do it via G.
I mean, he was the only one here unless he wasn't here either.
He was here. You want me to do finance?
Sure.
The two big things in there was the audit report and the Baird report. And then in the audit report, um, all of the reports that they submitted were on time reviewed and accepted. And the audit went well. Um, one of the findings was, they talked about was around the fund balance that our policy explains we could be at twelve percent. And so we need a plan to get to that, which I think we'll be looking at in another month. What will, that will help us in our planning. Uh, we'll know more about what we need to do there. It was interesting that they talked about most districts uh, fund balance level is between twenty and twenty-five percent. So, uh, as part of our planning, that may be something we discuss too in our policy if we're.
Policy is twelve to twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a minimum. Our, our minimum's twelve. Most districts seem to be around that twenty percent. So.
Or, or they were.
Yeah, may not be now. The other thing, um, they talked about some of the finding, the material weaknesses around segregation of duties, which is hard to do in smaller districts, and we know that. They're aware of that as well. And then they talked some about, um, the material adjustments, the, the coding of entries, um, where they had to, where they made some corrections or helped us with that. And, and we've made changes now in how we do it, the same with the reconciliation of the main checking account that wasn't being done on a regular basis, but is now. So all in all, the audit went well. Um, everything was accounted for. And, and, uh, very few issues that, none that we haven't corrected at this point. So I'm moving forward with that. The Baird report, um, a lot of information in there around revenue limits and, you know, how the, the impact on all the districts and now there was, uh, he did talk about how the revenue limit per pupil in twenty twenty-one was ten thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars. And for twenty twenty-five, it's eleven thousand six hundred dollars. So basically six hundred and fifty dollar or about a six percent raise over that time period when we know inflation went up considerably more than that last year and had been going up for several years before that. So it's part of the issue that all school districts are dealing with right now. And so, um, it, it is, you know, what drives all the districts to referendum in how our budget looks in the future and how our school operates would be reliant on that. That's about all I had on finance.
I can say from the time of the Capitol, almost everyone agrees that we have to increase the amount of spec aid money that, spec ed money that comes in to help out our districts. Any amount that they provide is offered is money that we don't have to backfill out of our fund then. Um, sounds like anywhere from hopefully forty percent up to sixty percent is what people have said, but I wouldn't count on that. It all depends what happens with the Supreme Court case and that three twenty-five over the next four hundred years. If that doesn't get solved, I heard one person tell me, um, you're only gonna get three twenty-five plus whatever on spec ed. So. Hope for the best. And then, um, B and G?
B and G, we, uh, we tabled the digital maps for discussion. And so then the maintenance director's report is basically the task list that's in board docs. We had a short discussion about that. And we did talk about they did some plowing and, and some, and some salting.
Did they remember how to do that?
I think probably barely.
All right. Thanks, Randall. Any questions for him? All right. We will move on into action items. Uh, first is consideration of approval of resignations, retirements, and hiring of district personnel. Ryan?
Yeah, so I wanna start out with we are looking to hire an administrative assistant down at the elementary school. So Liz can go back to her other duties or wherever we may need her next. And so we're going to look to hire beginning, um, just after, she'll start just after spring break, uh, Jody Courts. Um, so Jody has an education background and will be looking to join our team here, uh, really soon.
And background checks and stuff have all gone through?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I'll take a motion on the hiring of Jody Courts. Make a motion. Motion by Randall, second by Carrie, and a roll call. Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Bra, absent, Knadler.
Yes.
Schrader, yes. Wasorick.
Yes.
All right. Next, Ryan?
And we do have a resignation at the end of Ja, or April, end of April, we will have, um, Angie Forbes, who is our middle school maintenance. Um, she will be resigning, um, and looking to enjoy retirement.
Okay, I will take a motion on the resignation of Angie Forbes and thank her for her time with the district.
So.
Moved by Mike. Second by Robin and a roll call.
Humke.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Absent, Knadler.
Yes.
Schrader, yes. Wasorick.
Yes.
All right. Uh, next is consideration of approval of policy seven sixty-three, school meal immediate charges and collection rule.
Well, this is the rule that Jessica was referring to. We've had the policy in place, but we needed to update the language within the rule.
Okay, I have a motion.
I make a motion.
Motion by Jess, second by Randall, and a roll call.
Humke.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Absent, Knadler.
Yes.
Schrader, yes. Wasorick.
Yes.
Next is consideration of approval of the truancy intervention program updated flow chart. Is that for twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-four?
Well, it's a flow chart twenty twenty-four. So it's, that's the year, or that's the summer we had it updated.
Updated, okay. So for twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jess, second, second by Randall, and a roll call, please.
Humke.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Bra, absent, Knadler.
Yes.
Schrader, yes. Wasorick.
Yes.
All right. Five, four, consideration of approval of course description guide updates for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So the only changes to the course description guide for this upcoming school year will be within the art department. Our goal is to start the scheduling process in April, once we finalize what courses we're going to be able to offer.
All right. Do I have a motion? Motion by Robin, second by Mike, and a roll call.
Humke.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Absent, Knadler.
Yes.
Schrader, yes. Wasorick.
Yes.
All right. Five, five, consideration of approval of early college credit program at Start College Now applications for the fall semester of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Ryan?
As you guys can see in your, um, packet, there is the student requests. So we will get these approved for next school year. Um, so we need to do those now. Um, we've got forty-four different students who have applied to take college courses through either Start College Now or the Early College Credit Program. So this will be the, the list of courses so that Ms. Brogley and the teachers can begin the registration process. These are all courses that either the students have taken the comparable here at the high school first, or we do not offer the course and therefore then they are allowed to take those. So this is, um, state law that we have to provide these. Um, so these are the courses that we currently have students sign up for.
Those were in my mind, so I was gonna ask you about the comparable there is. All right. Uh, do I have a motion on that?
So moved by Mike, second by Jess, and a roll call.
Humke.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Nadler.
Yes.
Schrader, yes. Wasorick.
Yes.
All right. Five, six, consideration of approvals, spring season coaching contracts. I see we, is that the last person added there, Ryan?
That would just be, yep.
Uh, is it Brianna Bosson?
Yep.
Is that right, Joey?
Ralston.
Ralston? Okay, there's another person here.
Okay, we left off a letter there.
Okay.
Sorry, Bree.
Uh, do I have a motion on hiring of Brianna?
Second.
Moved, moved by Robin, second by Carrie, and a roll call.
Humke.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Nadler.
Yes.
Schrader, yes. Wasorick.
Yes.
All right. Uh, looking to go into executive session, I will need a motion and a roll call vote to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, one, C and F for the purpose of discussing employee staffing related to specific positions for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Do I have a motion? Moved by Carrie, second by Randall, and a roll call, please.
Humke.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Knadler. Yes. Wasorick.
Thanks, Bryce. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we are in closed session. Uh, thank you. Thank you for everybody online for joining us this evening. Pat, I'll send you those names, okay? All right.